Is to approve of the regular agenda for this special council meeting.
So.
Okay, I got a motion by.
Maggie.
Siler, second by Maggie Baz. If there's no other questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, path is five zero. First thing, on the general business is regarding the budget. My understanding, it looks like the same budget that was presented at our number four meeting, right?
Correct, so the levy is the same, the one primary difference is that the hundred thousand dollars that had previously previously been in government buildings under capital projects has been moved over to the debt service fund. And this is primarily to indicate that these funds will be used either towards debt service of an existing project, such as the police station, or another capital project that the city council so chooses.
That's just this year's hundred thousand.
Correct, yeah, so yeah, that was just moved over to the debt service to kind of more clearly indicate what that money would be for. But ultimately, like I said, sitting in there, there is still some discretion that the city council would have as to how that would ultimately get paid out. And so, and used, and so I'd say the purpose of tonight's meeting is to kind of set that tax levy budget in preparation for our truth and taxation meeting, that will happen here in two weeks. And then ultimately, all budgets, general fund and enterprise will get approved at the December fifteenth meeting, as we traditionally do. So, sitting right now, the bud proposed levy is five million, six hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars, which is a five point four six percent increase over the twenty twenty-five levy, and is expected to have an estimated tax impact on the city portion of the average residential property owner of four point one five percent. This, just as a quick overall, kind of page three, kind of runs through general fund overview and kind of what revenues are looking like and what expenses are looking like.
Josh, can you explain when you say the tax bank only four point one five percent, what do you mean?
Yeah, so while the while the overall levy would be increasing with this proposed budget of five point four six percent, city portion, on someone's, when you look at tax impact, the residential property owner pays a lower tax class than either a multifamily property owner, or even a commercial or industrial owner does. And so, with, due to how property taxes increase, a residential property owner would not have a, on average, obviously, there are some that do, some that'll have even lower, some even have a negative. Depending on how your value has changed from the previous year, will, is a large indicator of how your taxes will change in a given year. And so, while there is a five point four six percent increase under this proposed budget on the overall tax levy, the average property, residential property owner would see a four point one five percent increase.
So then the commercial and that would be.
Commercial would be higher.
Would be getting whatever, one point some percent higher.
Yeah, so commercial, commercial properties in Minnesota generally play roughly two percent, or roughly, the way I like to describe it overall, is if you're including the school district, county, and city taxes, a property owner in New Craig pays about one percent of their valuation or whatnot goes through the taxes. Commercial owners are looking closer to two percent tax rate on their valuation. So, commercial owners generally pay a higher tax rate than your residential owners, which is why your average residential property is going to usually be less than the overall percentage increase of the general budget.
So, in that proposed tax statement, I know it's going to be seven percent, but not really seven percent.
Correct, yeah, so the one.
So homeowner's going to see whatever, you know.
Yeah, so if I, if I remember.
Six point two percent or something.
Correct, yeah, if I remember right, it was around that low sixes that came off that seven percent preliminary.
Thank you.
Page three, kind of gives a.
I want to go, I got a question there.
Oh, yeah.
Let's not move too quickly here, so, when we were talking about how it falls to the homeowner, so where, just so we're clear, the average market value, where does that, that figure come from?
That market value is set by the county. And so, the county basically takes all of the market value within the city and says, okay, so if we average everyone from, I'm just going to make one up and say the highest is seven hundred and fifty thousand, down to the lowest of two hundred thousand, all those get thrown in, they come out with an average of, what is it, three twenty-six? I'm trying to pull.
Three twenty-nine.
Three twenty-nine.
Well, I see you have a, the, a little, I don't want to call it a disclaimer up there, but where you got the stats from. Is that correct, fiscal year values were as, as a five seventeen twenty-five on the Scott County side and five eight on the twenty-five on the Lassure side? So that isn't just a combination of the two?
Yeah, so, so thi- this particular chart comes from the Scott County side. I did end up getting the numbers for the Lassure side, which is where those got all calculated into here. But, yeah, those, those disclaimers, in terms of values, this was when Scott County pulls the Lassure County values, they don't have the Lassure County values, and while I was able to get some of the data, they didn't give me the values, basically, in time for this.
Okay, so.
So, so if you look.
Because I would think that the average house, on the Lassure County side too, considering some bigger developments over there, is considerably higher than three twenty-nine.
Well, well, I mean, there's both bigger, but there, I mean, the, the city even, if you look at, we'll say the older parts of town would probably have some of the lower values compared to the newest parts of town. There are, the, the, the city's pretty well split in the two of them. So if you look at that chart, though, all the way over to the right, Scott County gave the number of affected properties, based on the change in valuation. I also got those numbers from Lassure. So if you look at it, Lassure, Lassure's valuation changes coming into twenty-six are much more concentrated from that zero to five percent than Scots are, which seem to be more, I'll say, the zero to ten percent. And so that, those are the big drivers of, if you.
You see it?
Yeah, so I see it, yeah.
Yeah, so if, if your particular property will say changes four percent, you would fall into that line, and you would see that you'd have an average change of three point five percent. And I know if you print, the, the original graph was put on an eleven by seventeen, so when it comes onto a eight by eleven, it gets a little smaller, so I, we can certainly get you guys a larger copy if you would like to look at that.
No, I can read it. So, this, the hundred, I want to go back to this hundred thousand dollars then, that we were, from the government buildings. So, is that debt service four ninety-nine, is that the one that we just took everything out of to put towards the police station?
Uh, no.
What fund was that?
So, so, so that was just, that was just general fund. So, within the general fund, we are required to carry a certain level of cash to meet rainy day reserves. The, the state represents, recommends about fifty percent. I know, over the last number of years, going all the way back to, it sounds like, speaking with staff who have been here, since the first time the facility study was done, there was kind of a known thing that we have an old city hall in front of us and something may need to be done. And so, over the course of a number of years, when there was extra money here and, here and there, or the closing of a fund here and there, money was kind of started to be set aside for the, a city hall replacement. And it's just kind of earmarked within the general fund as assigned, but usable if the city council should change their mind. It's just kind of sitting there, and we, we keep track of all those spreadsheets and whatnot, and the auditors look through them every single year. And so that, when we ended up purchasing the Parks Building over there, we did dive into that money to do that. There was about one point five million, if I remember right, when, before we bought the Parks Building. Due to interest we were able to receive that year, we didn't have to dip nearly into, like, some of that interest that year was able to pay for that, and so that didn't pull out nearly as much for that Parks Building, as we'd initially paid for it and drained it down. So, the money that we're putting towards this police facility cash is coming from that bank of money that we have sitting as kind of a future facilities earmark within our general fund.
What, what, but it wasn't, it wasn't assigned to a specific fund?
No, so, yeah, i- i- it is in the general fund, it's, it's earmarked, but it's not assigned to a specific fund, like I think you're thinking of.
Okay, so how much is in debt service four ninety-nine fund, right now, if we're going to add another hundred thousand to it?
Robin is on the case for that exact number. I know we have not used that in the last few years, prior to me getting here, I think that fund was used more often when we'd close a debt service fund. The city would then just move whatever was left in that debt service fund into the four ninety-nine fund, and then that was used for capital projects as they come about, so they didn't necessarily always have to levy for a project here and there when something happened.
Right, so I don't know how much, I mean, we'll wait till Robin gets that, but then why didn't we use that fund to buy down that, those police bond debts, or prepay the interest? And we'd use money out of the general fund instead?
I mean, we, we kind of pulled it out of just, we knew that that money was sitting there. And it, it certainly could be, depending on how much is there, as we like square up the books at the end of the year. I believe we, there, I don't know how much was actually left in that fund, since we haven't really added to it since I've gotten here.
But that doesn't affect the levy at all?
No, but I'm always looking for where additional funds are, that could, that you could use for.
In the future.
In the future, or now, or why we didn't use them last year when we had a ten percent increase, even though, averaged it out to five over two years, because the year before, we didn't have one, but.
Total fund balance at the end of twenty-four was three hundred and thirteen thousand.
That was four ninety-nine?
Yep, so you hear it.
Three thirteen?
Three thirteen at the end of twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
So, yeah, this would take it to roughly four thirteen.
That's a debt service fund?
That is the, yeah, so, so, so it's, it's a capital projects fund.
Okay.
That is numbered the same as debt service, yeah, it's always kind of been considered a debt service fund. But, yeah, that money is available for capital projects or moving into another debt fund.
And that's the same fund that was kind of titled for equipment?
Yes, so it's the same type of fund, we, we more specifically created the equipment fund and stopped putting money into the, they used to put money into the capital projects fund, we started putting just money directly into the equipment fund, because we felt like it was a little more transparent, and that's what we were trying to.
And that's the same fund you're talking about?
They're not the exact, well, I'm saying, they're not the exact same funds, but they operate in the exact same way. That, that four ninety-nine fund is just there, sitting to be used towards capital projects or something like that.
Well, so my question is, is if we have three hundred and thirteen in there, why do we have to put another hundred thousand? Why wouldn't we just keep the government buildings fun, fund, since that's what it was kind of already designed for?
No, no, and that's fair, so that, like, that, that hundred thousand, we have been discussing, I know, I think we first started talking about that hundred thousand a few years ago, when we were wrapping up the facility study, and old architects basically said, with this aging building, even if you decide to do absolutely nothing, you're probably going to have over a million dollars worth of maintenance and upkeep just to put into it. Roof, windows, tuck points, back, that sort of thing. So we'd started talking about putting away this hundred thousand yearly to start preparing for that work, so it wouldn't be as big of a levy hit when it finally did come. And so that's what this money was for. Over the course of the last few budget discussions, it seemed like there was a little bit of discomfort over how that would use, and we didn't want it to necessarily disappear into not being anything. And so, I proposed to, well, still keep that hundred thousand dollars in the budget to prepare for these maintenance needs that we have with city hall, and or to use towards another facility, since ultimately, that's what a lot of this is getting used towards. And if there would be more comfort in the debt service fund, capital projects, having that money there, so that it was, while still flexible, it was more allocated towards that exact use of whether we want to try to offset that first year with the police fund, or like, that police debt payment, or whether we want to put it towards windows and for city hall in twenty-six. I know staff's been kind of working on a plan of what that would look like for some of these city hall maintenance needs that we know we have, since I'm assuming, and this is another discussion for twenty-six, now that police's station's kind of wrapped up, and once we get the budget wrapped up, talking about this building and what we may or may not be doing with it. And so that hundred thousand is a way of trying to build up a little bit of money, so that way we don't have as much of an impact hit whenever we decide to make that move or do maintenance on this building.
Yeah, we had that discussion at our last budget session.
Yeah, I unfortunately couldn't be at that one, so I'm asking those questions now.
Forgot about that.
So theoretically, that hundred thousand could, I mean, the five point four six could become three point four six if we were to use that hundred thousand. It'd still have three hundred and thirteen thousand in the.
If you were to just not levy for that hundred thousand, correct, it would lower, it would lower the levy roughly two percent.
Right, I just want to make sure we don't lose sight that when we, when we started with the police station, we agreed that we did not put in the contingency numbers into the bond issue, because we, we felt we had enough cash on hand to handle the contingencies if they were to happen.
That is correct.
And I, I, I think we looked at three different things that were earmarked, I'm trying to recall what the three areas were, but maybe the ambulance fund was one of them, maybe, I don't remember the other two.
I, I, I think, I think it may have been the ambulance fund and the, obviously, that kind of building earmark, facility earmark we talked just now about in the general fund. And I don't remember if it was four ninety-nine or not, I would have to go back and listen to our conversations.
Right, so, when, when we're talking about moving money again or something, I, as I said before, I think things become much clearer if we can get past that contingency part, because then we know that we have nothing really earmarked against any of these funds. But it's, I'm, I don't have my paperwork here, but wasn't the contingency like seven hundred thousand or some number like that?
It was a much larger number, yeah.
It's a large number that we, we're not financing, because.
And, and I believe.
We're hoping that we are not going to be using the contingency.
And I believe, if I remember our conversations, Bruce, I believe that we were financing like half of the contingency, because we figured we'd had cash for the other half if something should come up.
Maybe that's it, and then in addition to that, the first interest payment.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Three hundred some.
Correct, so the first interest payment, we always planned with cash, and then we were self-funding about half of the contingency.
So that's over six hundred thousand, all of that. So, before we get, if we're going to go down the road of trying to look at that, then we better make sure we have a good remembrance of what monies we're going to be having to have available for contingencies. I think that we're, so far, haven't run in any issues.
Nothing big, a lot, a lot of them have been like, we need to resize this pipe, or we, I know there was a couple utilities that actually ran under the fire station lot, that we, that were never really mapped, and it was pre-all of us sitting here. And so, we, we kind of gave a rough estimate of where they were, they got hit, and we had to repair them, like that, that's, but that's a lot of what we're hitting now, so I think as we get deeper into the project, there's just less that's going to happen, because a lot of it becomes above-ground stuff.
Right, is it safe to say we're, we're not even close to thirty or forty thousand in contingencies?
Does that include the soil stuff that we're over there?
We're over that.
Yep, that might, that might be safe, so ultimately, that soil thing ended, I think, cost us around twenty thousand dollars by the end of removing and disposing of, is roughly what that cost us. So, I would say we're certainly under fifty, I think, I could say.
Okay.
I think it's going to go higher than fifty, but it's probably, we haven't got those bills yet, just from.
I would think it would go higher than fifty-two, but not six hundred thousand.
No, not six hundred, right.
Right, but yeah, I would expect it to go over fifty.
So, yeah, as, as I said, this is very, very, very similar to the last budget that we saw, except for that hundred thousand, and kind of trying to be more clear with how that hundred thousand could be used. I know there'd been questions kind of in the past few meetings about like, what we could do with the future of city hall and or the maintenance of city hall, which is why I re-included that assessment needs report at the end. Didn't necessarily look to discuss it tonight, it was more as a, as a discussion, or as a, as a reading piece, if you would like to kind of reread that. As I said, internally, staff is working both on that and what it could look like here coming forward, as well as kind of working through a plan, as we've discussed, our sanitary sewer lines are hitting near max capacity in terms of city growth, and how many people can continue to tap into them. And so, we had a sanitary rate study done, or a sanitary feasibility study done here back in twenty-four, and we're wrapping up the kind of area charge rates addendum to that. That'll give us a better understanding of when property X annexes into the city in Platts, what should our fee be to them, so that way, the city, current city residents don't have to ultimately bear the cost of the sanitary system. It would become on those new people who need it and use it. The city would obviously have to finance for it in the, on the front end, and then would recoup as, our money as development builds out into those areas with sanitary. But that, those are two discussions we're having internally, that will be coming to you early in twenty-six, so that way we can start talking about those.
Well, we knew that sewer line was going to be coming, I mean, that was brought up ten, twelve years ago. Exactly why we should have thought more about the police station, as far as I'm concerned, but I'm not going to do the sour grapes thing. But, well, I would like to see if we could get that tax levy down closer to the rate of inflation, which I think in September was three, there was a big article today, and then Star Tribune, I'm sure Bruce, you read it, about the, how the property tax is becoming a serious issue, and there's a lot of upset people, and I know that from just talking with people here in town, and people reaching out to me. So, I think if we could use that hundred thousand to bring that down to three point four six percent, we're even better. It still doesn't hurt the long-term contingency plan, in my mind, but it could do a lot for the taxpayer and the homeowner, which unfortunately bears the brunt in this community of the levy.
I think the one thing to remember with that number that's currently slightly above inflation is we did adjust salaries across the board for a comp study, probably went a little bit higher than we would have normally done in a COLA year to kind of move them into place, if you remember, it was three point three to the nearest step is what people got, so you kind of got a, usually a range of three point three into the low fours. And so that does probably drive up that overall cost above inflation slightly more than it would have had we not done the compensation study. And so, yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that, that's probably a bigger reason why we're seeing a slightly higher number than we would have had we not done the compensation study.
Well, it is what it is, we did it.
No, 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 I, I agree, I'm just saying.
If you take the hundred thousand out this year.
Mm-hmm, oh, I know what's coming.
No, if you kept it in and used it next year, it would soften the increase.
Yeah.
Is, is, is my thing, I mean, if you're going to earmark it to, to use it, you know, next year you get a hundred thousand less. You know, so it's, it's either you pay it now or you pay it next year.
Well, I would hope that we're going to look at other options next year, on what we have, what we're going to have to do, the tough choices we're going to have to make. We'll have a new building, maybe we don't have new police cars, I don't know. I mean, all that should be on the table, to, to keep that number as low as we possibly can, is, is my opinion. But, and I would like to see it closer to the rate of inflation, and, because I know there's a lot of people that are angry out there, a lot of seniors that are really affected by this, so, and they've told me personally. And I think they, there's forty of them that sat in here one night, and to show their dislike on that. And if there's forty that actually showed up at a meeting, there's probably four hundred that are all talking amongst each other.
Are you talking about the twenty twenty-five street project hearing we had?
No, I'm talking about the police station. Petition one, and that was before the petition. The, the public hearing that we were supposed to hold, that we didn't, and then we did hold it, that one. Anyway, that's my two cents.
Other thoughts, like I said, I would, I would hope out of this, we can kind of take the, take forward what we're going to be presenting at the public hearing here in two weeks.
So at the end of the year, if we have excess revenue and expenses, then we put it where we want, right, or some fund?
Correct.
We could put it in the building fund or whatever.
Yeah, usually the auditor would recommend truing up to make sure we're still right around that fifty percent holding, and then excess of that, yes, we would, I mean, ultimately, we'd have the ability to do any of it, but yeah, they generally recommend.
Right.
Once you hit that fifty percent, and if you still have.
Because, I mean, I can see just quickly, I mean, we're two to three hundred thousand ahead right now.
Correct, yeah, if, if we end up two hundred thousand dollars ahead, then we have, we'd be able to direct that however we soft it.
And are you comfortable being in that position of being ahead? Makes sense to me.
What do you mean?
When you said, well, right now, we're sitting about two hundred thousand dollars ahead.
Four twenty-five.
Four twenty-five, yeah.
Right, based on the budget, you know, obviously, interest is a lot higher than what we budgeted and.
Yes.
You know, other fees, so we're ahead significantly.
Yes, we are.
You know.
I'll just tell you, it comes across as, we're trying to pad the books for the police station, is what it is. Because that's going to be the, moving forward, that's going to be the biggest chunk of stuff. And that's just the general feel out there, I'm not the bad guy for saying that, I'm just telling you. Like, we're trying to somehow, you know, perhaps the wrong decision was made or whatever, but now we need to kind of just smooth this whole thing over.
Well, I can't speak to what the general feel is, because I haven't talked to thousands of people.
Well, thousands.
And I'm not sure where you would have gotten the general feel of thousands of people, but you certainly have people that contact you that voiced that, but, same thing, there wasn't forty people that were just, as you say, there was pretty equal amounts there that evening. But, that's past us, but I'm just going to say the same thing I said before. The hundred thousand dollars, I support it being in there if it's used to offset the potential spike in the levy caused by the bond issue. If it's not going to be used for that, I would support taking it out, that's what I've said before multiple times, so. But, so, I'm not sure who, where people are hearing padding. I haven't ever said, let's pad or hide something, I'm not sure who's referring that to me or the council.
I think that's just an inference that can be made.
Who are they inferring that to then?
The, the city council, because ultimately, the buck stops with us, right?
Right, but.
They all saw that all of a sudden we took, you know, at first, it was going to be a twelve to fourteen percent increase just for the police station. Then all of a sudden, it was rearranged and brought down, we prepaid a bunch of the interest, and all of a sudden, it dropped to seven, or it was when we set the preliminary levy.
Yeah, the cost.
And then all of a sudden, yep, and now all of a sudden, the general feel is, is, oh, now they're trying to find other ways to move this around. And now we're trying to save two hundred thousand dollars that we already taxed for, which probably we shouldn't have last year, but now we have two extra hundred thousand dollars, and we're, we're going to hold it so we don't have this huge spike of something that, in my opinion, still was unpopular, at, at least to the scale of it. And, and there's, and a lot of people out there that do feel that, and that, that now all of a sudden, we're holding money back that could directly affect them next year in their levy and their property tax increase, to pad out something that wasn't popular. So, maybe from the side that you've talked to, that were, that there were people that were all for it, we did hear a couple of them here, but I'd say the overwhelming majority.
Nine and seven, I think there's, seven to eight, it was like twenty-two people different.
I had three waiting for me out in the parking lot, and that, that wasn't the end of the movie.
That publicly talked, I'm saying.
Yeah, oh, okay, that came.
Talking about TV stations and people.
No, I'm not talking.
I'm talking about TV stations and people always and, and
I wasn't talking to you.
All that type of thing.
No.
But.
And I, there's still, to this day, there's not a weekend that doesn't go by that somebody doesn't come up and say, thank you. I just do. I don't, maybe you're getting more, maybe you got ten people that come up and say, hey, thank you for building that, or to the level. I'm just telling you. The inference can be made. I, I can see it. It's not surprising if we're holding back two hundred thousand dollars instead of taking it, saving the taxpayer on this year.
Where are we holding back two hundred thousand?
You just were talking, we had the two, extra two hundred thousand that was gonna come out this year, that we're gonna save it to pad out the, or not pad.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, it, based on the way the financials look, we have, it looks like our revenues could be exceeding two to three hundred thousand when the budget was done last time. It, it, and that happens. I mean, you can sometimes have it. You don't have any permits, and, and you go the other way, too.
Right.
But I'm just
But then why wouldn't we spend it? If it was last year, why wouldn't we use it to keep that, the next year's levy down? And your point was, is let's hold it because we don't know that next year's budget, what that's gonna, now we got trunk lines.
For one thing, we don't know the actual amount. That's just me
Right.
Looking at it. At the end of the year, it, it may not be two hundred, or it could be four hundred thousand.
Right.
But we, if, you know, if you're saying, well, let's lower the thing like that, we're gonna use this, this money reserve to pay or, or think, I mean, you're, you're talking about an unknown.
Right. What I was talking about is a known, the hundred thousand dollars that they're gonna move into the general fund that would lower the interest from five point four six to three point four six, somewhere in that area. Another two percent is what Josh gave me, so, which is closer to the rate of inflation.
Which is, which, you know, that's what we're talking about. If you, if you take it out, then next year, you don't have it to use. So next year, you're gonna automatically a two percent increase because you don't have that to use. And you're willing, and you're willing to tell that to your taxpayers.
I'm willing to say, not only to, yeah, that, that's where our starting point is, and we're gonna have to make tough decisions. I also said that to you in the sense of, we might not be able to get a new payloader, we might not be able to get a new police car, we might not be able to give four percent COLAs, whatever it is.
Right.
So those are the tough decisions that we should be making on every year. I'm just, I just asked for, I would be happy to spend this hundred thousand dollars to lower that tax levy from five point four five, four six to three point four six, a little closer to the rate of inflation, which we just heard was through September at three percent. So, and then all of a sudden, then another two hundred thousand came out and whatever else, so.
It's just my projection, looking quick at the financials.
I know. I, I, that's a projection.
I don't know the exact number.
Right. And there you go. So maybe next year, if we use this hundred thousand and this two percent, and those financials come in as good as they did with you, I can go to the taxpayer and say, yeah, we're already at zero because we got two hundred thousand dollars. So now we're gonna go, we're gonna look at the stuff from there.
Put me here at zero.
Well, if, if it came in, our preliminary was three percent or whatever, and we still have the two hundred, if your numbers are right, and the two hundred thousand come in, we're not, you're not just jumping that, you, you were trying to make the inference that we're gonna go, we're gonna be two percent higher, and that I'd have to explain that. No, I would say we got two hundred thousand that we overtaxed you from last year, sitting there, so we're already technically the rears when we start, because we already have two hundred thousand of their taxpayer money to start moving forward with what we have to spend.
The levy isn't two hundred thousand.
No, I know the levy.
No, the levy is the levy. The two hundred thousand comes from, we budget X number of dollars for
I understand.
This, this, and this, which isn't taxpayer money.
It, it is money that we've collected on behalf of the taxpayer.
We collect on behalf of taxpayers, but that doesn't mean the taxpayer paid for it out of their property taxes.
Right, no.
It, it, it is our revenue stream.
We, we, we're
For permits, for all this stuff, for interesting, this, things, that. That's not on the levy. The levy is still the levy.
Right. Am I the, I, I
Or do, am I missing something?
No, no, I, I know where the money comes from, Chuck. It's just another way to keep, to, to pay our bills essentially, and that's what we're doing with either the levy and or these permit fees and everything else.
Right.
So it's the taxpayers' money, and if we can save them some money by collecting these pay, these fees, the two hundred thousand, we're already ahead of the game. You were trying to say that it's gonna cost, if I don't have this two hundred thousand, if we use it this year and not next year, can I explain to the taxpayer that we're gonna start at two percent above?
No, I'm just saying the hundred thousand. You're saying, take it out, but if we have a dedicated for next year, that's all we're saying.
Right.
The two hundred thousand is, is my estimation.
Okay, let's, let's just say, I told you what my piece was. I would like to use, I'd like to get that levy from five point four six down a little closer to the rate of inflation, like I have for the last fifteen years. And we could do that by using this hundred thousand and then hoping there's gonna be extra revenue coming in at the end of the year when we do our audit, which it might look like there is. And that we can use for next year. We'll have to still take, who knows what's gonna come up. We don't, insurance could go through the roof, or it could go down thirteen percent. We don't know. Right. So, and what I'm saying is, we tax our homeowners enough that we're gonna have to start making the tough choices and not getting new work trucks and doing this, like, really kind of like the, the thirty years, thirty, forty years ago, like they said. A lot of the equipment wasn't brand-new and shiny. I think we've done a great job over the last twelve years mapping out our stuff, and I think our city probably has some of the nicest equipment out there, but.
And I think those decisions are made very carefully. We're not just buying to buy.
Right.
And Matt has spoken to that many times, of repairs being made and putting off a purchase, knowing that it was going to cost a lot, and they would try to eke out with what they have. So it's not as if we're buying new stuff that often. We're making do with what we have, and we're being judicious with the money that is spent to replace any of that equipment.
Well, I think we could get more
Our stat, the staff makes tough decisions.
I'm not saying they don't. There's no implication.
We can't make tougher decisions. I mean, if it, if it's that dire, you know, yes, but right now, it's not that dire.
It isn't because we have five point four percent levy increases year after year recently, above inflation. So alls I'm saying is, is we have a hundred extra thousand dollars instead of throwing it into debt service four ninety-nine and making that four hundred and thirteen thousand instead of three hundred and thirteen thousand where it sits. Let's use it to bring down the levy from five point four six percent to three point four six percent. That's all I'm saying. And if it's four to one again, it's four to one. That's part of life with me, so.
Well, I think you could bring up some good comments. I, I, I agreed with your comment about, you know, if we're over, if we're gonna be over budgets, then we have to look at, are we, are we budgeting correctly? Do we levy too much? I think that's a valid comment and, and something I'd question, I question, too. You know, if we're, if we're ending up with having such a big overage, are we budgeting correctly on it? But when, when you look at it, we taxing too much, that, that's a concern I always have. What, what's the right amount to tax? But I don't have my numbers in front of me, but we're still at tax rates below any of the communities around us. And even with the police station, we're still gonna be below most of the communities around us with our net tax capacity rates that we have. So um it is a big bump, but my concern is the spike. I, I would not disagree with you. It takes a hundred thousand out. Because my, my position is, if we're gonna have it in, we're gonna use it to reduce the spike. And I think that's where we talk about rate stabilization and try not to have big spikes that homeowners are gonna be faced with big jumps. You know, most of the jumps that people complain about or talk about quite often are because the value of their house went up. The numbers, you know, mine, mine's going up seven percent, but most of that is because my value of my house went up. And I just got my statement today, so. I think we're going around in circles because I feel I'm going around, said the same thing I just said, but.
So what's the consensus? I mean, it, it looks like the only question we have is the hundred thousand. Correct.
It's the only thing that changed from last time.
Well, it, it didn't change the dollar amount, it just changed it was a dedicated.
Yeah.
Right, right.
So that's the question at hand. Is that something, if you take it out, that, that's fine? But I think it, it took, the point is we're not that far over uh cost of COLA. When you look at residential, they're only gonna have a four point one five percent impact. That's why I asked the question earlier, what, what's, what's the four point, well, that's what residents are gonna have. You're not gonna have a five point four six.
And I would like to clarify, obviously, some may.
Well, yeah.
But, but the average, the average would be four point one six.
Actually, six hundred and fifty-two houses will have more than that, according to this. They'll have anywhere from five to ten percent.
But there will also be a number that are lower than that.
And a thousand six hundred, and it's too small, thousand sixteen eighty-six or whatever.
Or no, that, that is all of them. That, that number doesn't include all of them.
That could be anywhere from zero or point one to five percent. So some of those people could be above the four point one five. And actually, the, the ones that are gonna be five to ten percent of the houses are twenty, almost twenty-four percent of the houses will be in that five to ten percent range. So that's where you get some of the animosity, I would think. Not everybody, but some of it.
Well, Bruce says his is seven percent.
Yeah, and then um, and Scott County, I think, was quoted in the paper today in the Star Tribune. That was one that had if his house went up seven percent, even if it was, the levy was zero, he'd be paying seven percent more. And if that's the average in Scott County, then everybody'd be paying seven percent more than, but they're on top of it, they're raising it eight percent. So really, it's a fifteen percent jump.
While I'm not extremely happy with the number, I think the number is the number.
I have a feeling it would be.
Well, what do we wanna do? Do we want to? What are you doing, Bruce?
Verifying my seven point.
Is that just the city part?
Right, but if you wouldn't, if you take out the increase in valuation, it's much lower than that.
Right. But that's also at the seven percent.
Mine went up over seven percent, mostly because the value of my house went up.
Right, but our, our levy was at seven percent for that state.
Yeah, Chuck, so, yeah, if you, if you follow the sheet, the people that went up between five and ten percent would see an average change of nine point three percent.
Yeah, just because our levy went up seven percent doesn't mean residential, commercial, industrial, and all that, they can be different amounts.
Right.
And that's where the, in, in commercial, industrial, takes a higher percentage of the burden
Right.
On evaluation.
Well, that's the other thing I was thinking, too. You guys are on the EDA. How about making it easier, trying to attract businesses? How about having lower taxes on businesses?
Well, then you're gonna shift the tax to residence? Is that what you're saying?
I'm just saying, I'd want lower taxes for everybody. I'm just saying that you could, if we're trying to attract business.
So, so I know, I guess Maggie, Sean have kind of expressed where they're at. Chuck, Bruce, Rick, thoughts?
We are where we're at. I mean, what do you, what do you want? What answer do you want?
Well, what do you want? I mean, you feel comfortable with the five point four six?
I do.
Bruce?
Yes.
And I'm comfortable with the five point four six, too. Also.
Okay, then I will bring back the budget, um, kind of as we've discussed here tonight for truthfully taxation at uh six o'clock on December first.
All right.
All right.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right, then I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Rick Sire. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In opposition? Shiny, that's